Good evening. We're in the new year, so I want to call the meeting over the Board of Selecting to Order at 6:01 or 6:30 on the notes. And first item is to approve minutes. Remember the meeting at 7:26, 7:30?
Can I make a motion to amend the minutes? That amend the first part under Audience of Citizens. I believe that he had asked that the committee be established for the Department of Design and Plan, and then the Astro Department. Secondly, a little more detail that he had asked about the procedure and status of requesting RFPs for work. And thirdly, he recommended that the second select rate expertise be utilized in developing and renewing and employing road work.
Well, since I've done the two Freedom of Information sessions since our last meeting, we really don't have to add all that detail.
You don't have to, I guess, but it does, it's more realistic than what we're staring at. I mean, what does it say here? This is all from the Firehouse Committee. Inquiring about spring schedule. He wasn't just inquiring about the spring schedule, he was specifically asking, what is the process for RFPs for, because he knew that he had been included in it. So he's asking about the process and the status of the RFPs. And then he made a recommendation, a suggestion that wouldn't get approved. He's involved because he has such deep expertise. And the point about firehouse, it's not just that he's just volunteering about that. He felt strongly that there should be a board of committee.
So I make a move that we amend the minutes, include those details.
Yeah, I'll just chime in for a second. I see Nick here. I remember a conversation, but it was more that he wanted to get put on the committee. It wasn't to establish a committee. I'm sure that when we get further along, there will be a committee, but I believe that Nick asked to be put on the committee.
I answered there was a committee and it was kind of like, well, it's the three of us, and then I made comment that we should put a committee together. And I would like to be part of that committee if possible.
There is a committee. I mean, there's already a committee of firemen and it'll be, as Dwayne said, if we were forward, there'll be a committee established.
But yes, you did say you wanted to be part of it because of your expertise and I second that.
Okay.
So whatever changes, I'm.
Well, it stands now, Rick Olson volunteered to be involved in the Firehouse Building Committee as he has building experience. That is not an okay statement. I mean, I'll modify that sooner.
I'm good with that. Catherine, would you mind?
Would you ever just like what you said?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we look for that committee.
Well, that is, that is how the minutes read now. I just read, I didn't change anything.
I'm good.
I'll define that.
I'm good.
On the RFPs, the process for RFPs, the time for RFPs for the work?
For 2024, it was what's going to be a process going forward, identifying the roads, you know, what's the best value for the taxpayers, how much can we tackle this year for road improvements, what's the budget? And then I made the suggestion of.
Right down there, please, on the notes about what Catherine just brought up. No, you're in business right now. So what would you like to change to be, Catherine?
I think saying Nick asked about the procedure and status of RFPs for spring road work.
All right, I have parole on that. One second, the motion for that addition.
I'll say.
Okay, Wallace, favor.
Aye.
And so do I have a motion to approve the minutes then?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, next thing on the agenda is Audience of Citizens. So just remind everyone, it's a state agreement for the record and comments should be kept for maximum five minutes. And it's not intended to be a question and answer. So anyone who'd like to go from the Audience of Citizens, that'd be happy, nice to meet you tonight. Yes?
I'm Jordan Westell, here at Deep River. With the technology that we have available today, and you often voice complaint that not enough people participate, is there any reason why these meetings couldn't be moved to a higher Zoom meeting so that people that have kids that can't necessarily leave at home alone, or people that, you know, arrive home late from work, still have to eat and function, could still listen in to unmeet active meeting, perhaps participate if necessary? We have the technology available. One of the problems we have in this town is that people don't have a full understanding of what's going on, and they also frequently lack the ability to participate because of time constraints with their families and other responsibilities. I'd like to see that kind of change made so that people could do that from their homes.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to say, great job straightening out the playground money the other week. You know, I could take a note for the answer, you kind of kept your foot on the problem, got some answers, and could have been detrimental to the taxpayers if you didn't.
Thank you. Yes, we were happy that it had, you've got it resolved. And that is something that we probably should mention that we had fixed, solved, putting the cart in back of the horse.
Got your week's pay that way, that's for sure.
I'm just curious, Peter, just curious, does that cover both playgrounds or just the one that was already prepared?
That, the question of the monies that were already spent was only for the Deep River Elementary School playground that was already installed.
Okay, so, but nothing's been done, wasn't there one put aside or gone after for the debit field?
Yes, so the total amount of the grant was $325, so $220 was spent at the elementary school. And then we just ordered some pieces for debit field, so that renovate, that'll be all renovated, we're hoping for opening day, whatever.
Well, no, I'm just curious because I've been a children and I've been there, and it's pretty horrific.
So that's been ordered. We wanted to wait to make sure we could recover that other monies that we didn't have, we didn't want to keep spending for that. And then we also have pieces going in at Frattle eventually, but we haven't opened those yet. Okay, sorry, I'm taking minutes as well, so it's a little. So the next thing on the agenda, anyone else for Audience of Citizens? Kind of look down there. WPCA. So there was a lot of discussion on our end with a lot going on there with that salary study and everything, so people started really looking into that, at least for us. So I did talk to the town attorney and tried to clear up some things. So that really, you know, the WPCA, because it's an authority, it operates under the State Statute, General Statute, Chapter 103, Section 7245, and Section 7273. So it really allows for the town to exert some limited control, especially if the town votes to provide taxpayer funds for any of its function. But really, the fees collected from user fees go directly to cover the cost of the bond payments, is how it should be. So the intent of the government wasn't for the town either to collect money to put it in their piggy bank to spend on other things. So we are, as a group, going up there on Friday for a field trip, if you will, walk around the planet, and then probably have more to report back in the future, next meeting.
I was talking with the head of the Board of Finance and one of the members from WPCA the other, last week, there was a special, there was some specialized counsel for someone who has expertise in regulations about bonds, to understand which entity has the obligation for capital funds and the servicing of the costs. And I know I copied you both on that, and just wondering, does that come out of the general budget, is that something you need to approve? How does that?
Well, we talked to our town council and she felt comfortable answering and doing the research. I'm going to reach out to a couple other WPCA, you know, just to see what they do with their revenues and that sort of thing. So at this point, I don't think we have to do, you know, employ a bond counsel. And Bud went with me yesterday, the head of the finance, just talked to Jane March, the town attorney. And he left there feeling very comfortable with, you know, how she was going to approach it, and then, you know.
So no issue with capital costs or servicing or anything?
Well, right now, no. Again, we're going to dig a little deeper into that. Because as they added on to the WPCA and pieces, you know, different bonds were acquired for one piece, let's say, and then a mega bond was acquired as we did additions. So I think that's where we have to just solve or sort out what got paid out of what bond or something like that. So we're looking at it a little further, but it's definitely an interesting situation because it really isn't a, it's something, it's a standalone entity and it doesn't really come under the town budget.
While we're talking about WPCA, I mean, the issue's happened for Peter Knox, who sent us a letter and somebody came about the interest of the board seat, and now we're waiting to be forward.
I apologize, I have not reached out to Peter to talk.
I'd reach out, but I want to go quickly, just like, just to learn a little bit more about the board that's consisted up there and together, and I have no problem.
Yeah, so I, so you know, if you're watching, just the holidays got, and I didn't have time to reach out to him, but I think that's probably a better idea. I'll have to go Friday, we'll have a better idea before.
You've been sent a lot of emails, I'll confer some information that you haven't applied, correct?
If we've gotten down, you were copying, you have the budget, you have some, which will be remaining.
Not for a man that he, he'd sent out?
Yes.
Oh, I go, you got that. It wasn't that. No, it was very interesting. Peter Knox. Okay, so the ARPA funds, so I think we need to, and we've talked about this, so I know you're all agree on that, we need to move forward and figure out what we're going to do. And now that we're in the new year, I think what, so correct me if I'm wrong, my recall is that when we left last time, our special meeting about, we were going to move to the new year and then go through the list and invite people back that had already put in a request for some of the money, so they could re-present to us as a new board, and then we'll have everything fresh in our minds when we. So we can do it one of two ways, we can have, you know, maybe two people come to a regular Board of Selecting meeting at a time, or something, I don't want our Board of Selecting maybe to get too bogged down with that. Or we can do a special meeting and invite everyone and tell them they have basically five minutes to present or something like that. What do you guys think is the best?
First, we have to, we have the town meeting to approve the software, you're going to be there first, correct?
Right, so that's, I have that down on the seven, I put it out of order.
Exactly, that's Monday, that's coming out of that.
Yes.
So when we have that next figure, then I would like to set a meeting, I would bring them all at one time.
Okay.
Special move.
Special meeting, bring them all at one time?
A lot of them.
You're fine with that, Catherine. I don't kind of have the limits or whatever for time. Okay. Okay, sounds good, some special meeting, bring them all.
And the town meeting for next week is.
Yeah, so we can jump down to seven. Town meeting next week, and I was going to try to do it for 1/17, because it looks like there's meetings like every night, you know, spending so many, there's stuff going on.
Seventeen, EDC at night, maybe at seven.
What's Wednesday, EDC?
Third budget workshop, both at the same time, seven and seventeen.
So EDC now it's on Wednesday?
I may have reported this on there, I don't know.
Mondays, I think you're scheduled for Monday.
Monday?
Monday's tomorrow, but I can't. Yes. All right, so I'll look at the all meetings and send out.
Is that how many is it for the?
Yes, the town, you know, be strictly to approve spending ARPA money on finance, for the finance department on a software package for the town, upgrade our software for all our county, which I believe hasn't been updated, I want to, did you say the annual stated 1990 or something? So it's very old, it does, it's very limited capabilities, and we can't print a lot of reports on the ease, you have to kind of separately go into each department or something, like it's, it's very cumbersome. So Anne Marie Ryan, our finance director, will be at the town meeting to answer all questions prior to the vote. Then the other part of the ARPA fund, so that would be about $85,000, I believe, for that, and then $25,000 would be for a new generator up at the town garage, they definitely need to. But we'll put up, that'll be a town meeting, that'll be publicized, so please come and go. Let's jump back up. So a discussion regarding marketing with town seal name of all town and police vehicles. Sorry, I'm losing my voice, it's the, it seemed like we had general consensus that we were, that was something we wanted to do for it. So I've kind of done some cost, looking at the costs, it's going to be about $900 a car. $800 to $900 a car, but that gives you the two side panels and maybe something in the back, then if you want extra, like 911 or something else on the car, and then add a little more, so maybe roughly about $900 a car. And I think four or five cars, I think you have four.
I was looking, I said, I was looking at, to those, also look at the town.
I'd like to look at both, but of course, I'm the question of where do you get the money from? So is this something we have to push off to the next fiscal year, job first, for the legislature? Yeah, I mean, it's something we want to do, but then we have to find the funds to do it, so. But is that the agreement, is that town vehicles, county vehicles?
Yes.
And suggest highly doing PCA as well, but they don't need a class, so we really have, enjoy it all.
Also, at the board finance meeting, Michael, I was suggesting, while you have insight and awesome contracts in order to get these.
Yes, I talked to him a little bit, and then there's a couple online, there's like, there's a couple police companies that you can kind of go on and see what the package is, basically, it's a package, depends on what you want as far as graphic, if it's a very straight design, I guess it's obviously cheaper than if it's custom, so we'll be working with them. You probably have to come up with a few million, vote on.
Do you need a motion on this?
Well, again, I don't know about the financial package or that piece. I mean, we can make a motion and move forward, but we have to find the money to do it. It's not in our budget now.
Move it to Board Finance in two weeks, see what they say.
Okay, I guess you don't give an estimate of the number of town vehicles, the number of council cars.
I don't think on every truck.
I don't, I don't think that the truck would be as much money as the cops, your police cars. I mean, you thought just a seal, you know, a town people are sealed, I can't believe that would be $800 or $900 for a seal to put on a car.
Well, that's true, I would believe that, I really only, for, for the police.
I understand, police car, you know, how would you put up the town trucks, I can't, I can't imagine that, but maybe.
So I need a motion, a motion that we approve for the town side on our police cars, our town vehicles, and strong recommendation that the WPCA do the same, and with this recommendation that it needs to the Board of Finance for consideration, they'll pay for it. Okay, one second.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, so we'll skip off the seven, we'll jump to our town meeting, I'll get your beat for that. Transfer station update. So the transfer station, we kind of left it last time that we were going to, and that may be last time, but one of the meetings in December, where we were, the ad hoc committee was kind of dissolved, or, you know, at the end of their term, if you will, because they, they were only put together to get the pilot program through, and that ended, so. But the thought was, we wanted to have a transfer station committee, so as I talked to the town attorney, and she had sent over this resolution today, and she submitted, as she said, it really doesn't have to be a committee that has all the bells and whistles of other committees, that doesn't have to be in our ordinance, you know, it doesn't have to be established by ordinance. She recommended more of an advisory committee, and then we talked about how many people we should have on, and I thought seven is a good number, so we didn't have to vote on this tonight, if you want to take home and read with laugh that she came up with and tweak it, it's really just stuck in that she put. I just presented it tonight, in case you're fine with the language, then you can approve it, and we can figure out how to fill those out. And I know Catherine, you had said, you know, maybe some engineers, people, you know, so we can figure out who we want to put on it, this is just to establish it.
I have no problem moving forward.
You speak with it.
Maybe, you know, any other committee, maybe we should have them report back to us occasionally or whatever to see what they're, see what they're, what they're thinking. You know, you guys have meetings every week with the, there are always people, not who we want to meet every week, but, you know, once a month or every couple months, see what they're thinking, what's happening up there, like in any headway.
I like that, this suggests that the board would give them some, in order to have their time to develop, and two days for advice.
Right, and I was excited, we're speeding, we're a little over, so I thought we'd be like, how could you run with this? But maybe add something to the, to the, to the, to the, that they need to run further off, and then we post after that, sort of. So a little. We'll make these couple corrections and then additions, and then we'll re-tweak it and bring it back for the next meeting. Report to the US and the US.
This is terrible.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So you might want some names on the board?
Yes, so we'll be looking to fill those positions. And then the other thing, I've done some research on some transfer stations. Basically, I looked at 12 other transfer stations, and it's very hard to, so we are currently hiring for some of the transfer stations, so, anyone listening out there, watch, we need to. I think the difficult part is that we, we are open on Saturdays and Sundays, and it's very hard to get somewhere at once, work every time. Out of the 12, I looked at, excuse me, I looked at New London East Lawn, Broughton, Old Line, Westbrook, Bradford, North Bradford, Killenworth, Guildford, Oldstead, Waterford, and Camden. The only one that's open of these 12 on Sunday is Camden, or Had, excuse me, and they're open only from 8 to 11:45, so if we can't get personnel up there, that's something that we have to close, maybe we close on Sunday. Seems like we're the only one around that's open on Sunday. Most of them, most of them seem to be Monday after Friday, and then like, one is the first Saturday of the month, or the Saturday after holiday, or something like that.
I hate it.
So anything we have to decide tonight, but just the research I've been doing, it does seem like, maybe that's why we can't get employees, because they do seem to not like to work every Saturday and Sunday, so.
And I, and I understand that more hardly, but on the other side, Sunday's probably the busiest day up there.
Yeah, well, we do find Sunday, the staff says that's when a lot of people from other towns, they catch up there, because everybody else is closed. So it might, if we do close Sunday, it might help keep other, you know, it might, it's not that issue, where we have a lot of other out of town that's trying to get in there.
Just that, I know the working family that's working, running the children out on Saturday, or sporting event or something, or girls have boy scouts, and then Sunday, they're going to the dump, so I understand the out of town, but I also understand people that are juggling a lot of things and trying, trying to get the comp also, so closing on Sunday, it's a, it's a tough, tough decision.
People are flying. We, we've had a few people, and then when they find out it's a weekend kind of thing, they go, ah, that's too much, or, you know, so.
Every full weekend?
Every full weekend, so we're, you know, we're trying to see if we can get some more time, whether to come in and work a weekend, two weekends, a month, or something, you know, it's just the requirements that we have.
Hard.
It's hard. So, I mean, maybe the first thing is cut back Sunday to half day or something, like, you know, like Adam does, 8 to 11:45 or something, and then at least whoever's working there has Sunday afternoon, you know, I don't, it's just.
No.
But that is the feedback I've been getting, so.
Especially for a whole day at home, family, it's tough to work and be home and family.
Yeah. Well, that's all I had, but if anyone would like to see this, I kind of keep them together, so feel free. A lot of them have fees too, it's interesting. Okay, and now, anything else on transfer station? So now we've added a second Audience of Citizens, based on, you know, some comments that we had, so I will open it up again, anyone from the floor, the same rules as before. And I think I saw someone over here with a hand raised before.
I'm just curious with the marking of the vehicles, why wasn't that put in a mission on the vehicles for purchase? I mean, you put these vehicles out of bid, why is that not included in price of vehicle? I work for garages, a lot of our fleet vehicles come marked or are marked before they're delivered to the town. I'm just curious why that's, has not been done. You see, you know, all our police cars, right, we have police cars, are they put up to, you know, to bid? And why do we have all two-wheel drive, or mostly two-wheel drive, police cars? Our hills, we have a lot of hills and roads, and why aren't they, why don't they look uniform? Why aren't they all the same? You know, so that you, again, marking them is a big thing, making them uniform is a big thing.
I will chime in for, since I've been selecting for eight years, he's been very fortunate and recipients from the Whaler Engineering, donated a car to us.
Okay. But I think, wouldn't you say around, hey, look, we want them to be all uniform? Hey, you know.
I, I understand, but you know, you really, you really want to give something to us.
What you have, so that when the people within the area come and they go, okay, that's a uniformed car, I can give you the Sabre, Flynne, Essex, Westbrook, look at the police cars, check them, they're uniformed, they're all marked. Okay, town trucks, yeah, and you're right, a seal, you can have those seals made at any paint shop, you know, multiples of them, and you can put them on yourself.
You can make Maggots too.
Well, you don't need Maggots, but Maggots fall off.
Yeah, we have a couple.
All right, but I mean, you can, there's.
Our town vehicles, our town vehicle trucks were marked years ago. I've never seen a police car marked in town before, I've given it to sixty years.
But I mean, why police cars are marked? We're not the state police, where the town of Deep River, our cars are paid for, well, not all of them, but most of them are paid for by the taxpayers of Deep River, as are our town vehicles. Why are they not marked, town of Deep River? That way, if I see a car that I feel is not being maintained, not being taken care of, or is ready to fall apart, I can say, hey, jeez, we need to replace this, or hey, you're not taking care of your stuff. Versus, hey. Versus, hey, it's broken, we need to replace it now. Why is it broken? Did you take care of it? I couldn't tell you. I see a lot of red trucks. Are they Deep River? I don't know. I see a lot of police cars, state, state auction cars, okay? Yeah, they're a police car. Are they Deep River's police cars? I don't know.
Well, our town vehicles do have that license plate, they'll say.
And I'll tell you, so every time, I'm a, I'm a kid, I'm in the street, okay? And I go, I need a police car, I'm, you know, a ten, twelve-year-old, need a police car. Oh, look, I better look, oh, is that plate marked Deep River? Or does that car seem, please? Tell them.
Or, the, the, I meant only on the town vehicles, I'm sorry. And not the police cars.
All right, and that's a fact. Whether they're, they're marked or not, it's a fact. You have, you have cars marked, you have speakers, okay? Take a car, I'm marked, party to the road. Take a marked car and party to the road, you need a common car to slow it down. I mean, you, you gotta, again, and with town vehicles, trucks, equipment, I'm helping pay for those. And if they're not being taken care of, I want to be able to say, hey, what happened to that vehicle? Sorry, license plates, don't do it, I'm not running around with your plates all the time. Okay? That's my comment.
Um, that includes the fire vehicles too, correct? Fire parking vehicles?
It should.
For marking, it should. Yep, and just so you know, there is a sign shop, a decal shop in the industrial park. It's called, uh, there's a, they do decals, vinyl wrapping in the industrial park.
What's it called, it's like.
I can't, I, I honestly, I can't, I can't call, I'm done with that right now, but he's, he's renting an incubator building, he wraps cars back there, that's what he specializes in. It's CT Wrap, that's what it's, you know, Connecticut Wrap, but it's, it's, uh, it's down there, I'm sure he would appreciate the business.
Those are on Kirkland Street.
Do it. And like you said, I'm sure you could simplify those decals to work town seal, or fire chief for public works, and really cheapen it up.
I think five, I think Tim, his car.
You know, rather, and I could see the cop cars being pretty crazy, but the other stuff can be pretty simple.
No shallow ones, the sign shop, Kirkland Street, this one's usually been responsible for the damage to us, means we can go.
Oh, fortunately, sure.
Is he still there? Did he, did guys have digital graphics, and so? Did he move, did, did he move up to the industrial park? Is that another, oh, I think so. Okay. Yeah, there's a guy, does the whole car, he wraps boats, everything, he did my nails.
There is another sign guy down there, John, or something.
Good. Should, we should use one.
Anyone else?
Two things, one real, I really like, I appreciate the emails you guys have been sending out summarizing things, that's really good to see, but the, the, the end of the year summary and stuff, I think those are communicating with town great. When you, I know those are just both constraints, when you get to doing the ARPA presentations, I, I don't think some of these could be described in five minutes. So I think you need, I'd be great if we could figure out something, you want to be fair, but I know my presentation, which you saw, it's, it's a, a big project, takes more than five minutes for you folks to understand clearly, so however you can arrange that, whether it's in a smaller batch, or, it's just, I think five minutes is hard to, to get a point across.
Okay, thanks, that's good. I'm sure we can figure something out at some time, we'll see how many people are on this. Anything else, anyone?
What are you doing the public works walk for? I know you mentioned you guys figured out the WPCA, and you talked about, um, that's a public works grab.
You know, as soon as we don't have us, we're on, like, I think there's another one coming next week, on Sunday or something, I would just say, but, I, I think very soon after that, we're about to get in there, the flow is, and comes. Is it going to be another rainstorm coming up?
I think this one pretty soon.
Anything else, anyone? All right, I have a motion to adjourn. Can we adjourn a minute?
Sure.
Okay. Almost a third one.
All right.
Okay, adjourned seven oh four.